I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, February 9, 2021 at 7:32 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Levering and Alderwoman Kelly will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with the spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-4, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-205-6099. The meeting ID is 892-3145-4969, and the passcode is 946427. The public may also view the meeting via channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the city of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the Nashville Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or channel 16, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting will be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right-to-know law. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I am home alone.
Alderman Cle.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings, and I am here alone.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'm present. I can hear everyone, and I'm in the room alone.
Alderman Karen.
Yes, I am here. I can hear everyone, and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I am here alone in the room, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I can hear and see everyone, and there's no one in the room with me.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Jettie.
I'm here alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I'm present. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Loz.
I'm here alone, and I can hear you.
Alderman Cleaver.
I'm alone, and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
I am present. I'm in this room alone, and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. I'm alone, and I can hear everyone.
You have 15 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Does the mayor, do you wish to address the board?
Yes, Madam President. Thank you very much. Well, first, I wanted to tell you a little bit about what's happening with the pandemic. As you've probably heard, the number of cases has gone, the new cases has gone down a bit, which is, of course, good news. Public health, which, as we've discussed, has been working seven days a week to eradicate the pandemic, but this, but now the number of cases is at 294 as of yesterday. A few weeks ago, we were at 500 in some, but of course, over the summer, we had a far lower number, 30, 40, 40 active cases. Another bit of relatively good news is that the positivity rate in the city, that's the rate when people are tested, the rate for COVID-19, the percentage of people who come up with a positive test, that's the positivity rate, that has declined from 11%, 12% a month or so ago to 7.3%. So as a result of that positivity rate being below 10, it appears that within a couple, a few days, the two criteria that have been articulated by the school board for the opening, the beginning of the reopening of schools, starting with hybrid in the lower grades, will have been met. And the school board met last night, and the plan is to go forward next week and begin to open the first kindergarten, first grade, and then progressively up in the grades, all of those classrooms. So that certainly is good news. I mean, we all want to get back to normal. We all want to keep our families, our friends, our neighbors safe, and the school board is proceeding in a way that can meet educational requirements and meet that goal. We need, though, to continue to wear our masks. The science is clear. The medical experts have made it very clear that if we don't continue to take protective measures, wearing masks, social distancing, that the consequences for our economy, for our community could certainly be much worse. Our next man of president, there was some interesting news today, which is that the city, as a result of an auction of the final piece of land underneath the NIMCO building, the city is finally the 100% owner of not only the NIMCO building, but the land underneath. And the way that occurred is that little piece of land was auctioned off. The city was able to bid a debt that the owner of the land owed to the city, and there were no other bidders. So the city secured the land. And Celia Leonard has worked hard on that for many, many years. I don't even know, five, six years. So finally, we have secured ownership of that building, and that certainly is good news for the mill yard. Madam President, another thing that's on the agenda that I wanted to mention is the AFSMI contract with Public Works is on the, on the agenda to be voted on. I certainly hope the board will pass that contract. The city gained some improvements in the snow plowing plan. There are 10% raises granted over six years, and the employees did agree to the city's HMO, reformed HMO plan. So overall, that's a very good contract for both, for both sides. Finally, I wanted to mention a few things, Madam President, that are going on in the legislature. And I know we have, of course, our members of the board who are also in the legislature, but not known, I think, to maybe all of the board members is, is the fact that Senator Evarde has sponsored Senate Bill 32, which would retroactively go back and put Nashville's spending cap into effect. Some of the testimony that was offered in the Senate Committee, it was not accurate, wild spending, things like this. Let's just remind people that last year, the city budget was up less than 3%, including a huge increase in healthcare costs. And without that one line item, the city budget was only one and a half, up 1.52%. So I think we have done our best to keep a good balance between services and the tax rate. Another bill that received at least a positive recommendation is one sponsored by Mike O'Brien and supported by our entire legislative delegation, and that is to restore 5% of the city IOU. The city promised to pay 35% of city and other municipal pension costs back when we got into the state retirement system. Mike Alderman O'Brien has the bill to restore at least 5% of that 35. He could give you the details, but that received a favorable recommendation from the committee, but that's not a final decision in the sense that it still has to go to the House Committee, which allocates money, the House Finance. So, but at least that has passed a, an initial hurdle. There's another bill that would contribute 15%, and that is coming forward as well. But thank you, Alderman O'Brien, for shepherding that through the committee. And finally, Madam President, today I testified in, I've testified on a number of bills, but today was House Bill 623, which would give us, give all communities the same amount of school aid as they've received for the last two years. Now, this would gain us about, this would be for the adequacy grant and for free and reduced lunch and a couple of other smaller categories. This would gain us about $4.5 million were it to pass and were it be, were it to be funded. So that is at least under consideration in front of the legislature. There are other bills that certainly have relevance to Nashville, but I will not go into all of them now. And of course, I'm available for any questions if anybody has any. Thank you, Madam President.
Someday I'll learn to unmute first. It's only been a year. I think I heard that last night from Alderwoman Kelly.
Sometimes it just takes over, you know?
Responses to the remarks of the mayor. Anyone? Seeing none? Recognition period.
Celebrating Kathy Hirsch.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Donches.
Thank you, Madam President, again. Well, we want to recognize Kathy for Kathy Hirsch for everything she's done for the community. Most recently, she's retired from the board and the leadership of the International Sculpture Symposium. But Kathy and I have worked together on many things over a long, long time. She's smiling because she knows that's true. One of the early things was the wetlands protection, which was passed through a referendum back in the 90s. And Kathy was very instrumental there, but we'd also worked on some other things before that. So Kathy has been very involved in the Nashville community in many respects. As you all know, she was on the Board of Aldermen and was a community development director as well, but many citizen roles that she's taken. So given her retirement from the Sculpture Symposium, we wanted to recognize her for her just outstanding contributions to Nashville. So the official recognition reads as follows. Whereas Nashville is a community of many wonderful, kind, giving citizens, among them is Kathy Hirsch. Kathy has put her heart into Nashville through volunteerism and civic service. And from her work with the arts, serving on the city's Board of Aldermen and the New Hampshire, and the New Hampshire Rail Transit Authority to the Nashville Regional Planning Commission and the Nashville Conservation Commission, Kathy continually dedicates herself to our community. And whereas Kathy is most known in our community for her work with the arts, as a founder of the Nashville International Sculpture Symposium, Kathy helped the arts come alive in our city. Over the past 14 years, the symposium brings sculptors of international acclaim to Nashville year after year, leaving us with beautiful, thought-provoking public art. And whereas Nashville is the only city in the country that has an annual international sculpture symposium, the event affords, affords residents and visitors the chance to experience art in a unique way. People get to watch the sculptors work in real time, and the sculptors find new inspiration in our community. It's thanks to Kathy, the hard work, and the hard work by many in Nashville's art scene, by grant sponsorship and fundraising efforts that makes this special event possible. And whereas Kathy's many accolades include New Hampshire Citizens for the Arts 2018 Advocate of the Year, the 1991 Conservation Hero of the Year by the Nashville River Watershed Association, and in 2013, the city designated the Kathy Hirsch River Walk, which is over on the north side of the river. Now, therefore, I, Jim Donches, Mayor of the City of Nashville and the Nashville Board of Aldermen, do hereby recognize Kathy Hirsch as a special Nashville citizen. Thank you for all you've done. Yeah, thank you for all you've done, Kathy. And we have other members of the Sculpture Symposium Board on the, on the, on the meeting, and they are cheering for Kathy Hirsch.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that. I mean, Kathy Hirsch was one of my mentors when I first got on this board. She has been one of the best stewards of the city and its resources of anyone I've met in my career as a, as a public servant, whether it's arts or natural resources. She's just puts her heart and soul into everything she does. She's a fabulous, outstanding member of our community. So thank you, Kathy. Okay. We are going to move on. Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the Special Board of Aldermen meeting of January 25, 2021, and regular meeting of the, and regular Board of Aldermen meeting of January 26, 2021, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons. Without objection, I will allow for the suspension of the rules for communication from Attorney Leonard that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communications have been received from Matthew Sullivan, planning manager, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed Resolution R 21109, authorizing issuing of building permits on Old Harris Road, a Class 6 highway, from Lisa M. Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen relative to Resolution R 21106 and R 21107, from Kim Kleiner, Director of Administrative Services, regarding the Court Street Theater, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communication received from the public, from Sarah Machon, Community Development Division Director, regarding proposed clarification to land use codes related to driveways and related to Land Use Code 19040 Conservation Subdivision, from Lori Wilshire, President of the Board of Aldermen, regarding calling special meetings of the Board of Aldermen, one relative to the presentation held at 6:45 this evening, and one relative to a non-public session on February 24, 2021 at 6:15 PM, and from Celia K. Leonard, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding updated attachment for Resolution R 21117.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board? Please raise your hand. Unless I'm missing anyone, I don't see anyone for public comment. Communications requiring final approval.
There are none.
Petitions.
None.
Nomination, appointments, and elections.
There are none.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 25, 2021 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the January 27, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 2, 2021 Penachuck Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 3, 2021 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Board of Aldermen's appointments?
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R 21105, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $1,500,000 to purchase two new engine pumper trucks for the fire department.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-21-105 by roll call, and if, if I may speak to my motion.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. What's going to happen here with this resolution is the fire department's going to purchase two new fire apparatus. Those that went to the meeting knows that by the SURF account and recommendation, the engine company that is up on the SURF this year is Engine 3, which serves at the Spickick Road Station. It's a vehicle of 2009, and it's, the fire department has a policy to change this apparatus at 12 years. So 2021 is the year that it needs to be changed. But in years past, there was a crunch. The year after that, Engine 5 was purchased in 2010. It will reach its 12th year anniversary next year. And looking in negotiations with Pierce Fire Apparatus, they do have a cost multi-vehicle discount. And basically, this is going to be a cost savings if we purchase these two apparatus at the same time of a how, over $100,000. Anticipating on the bonds, bonds are lower right now. Anticipation in the bonds, there could be 3% to 5% increase. So therefore, that money, 3% to 5% increase, would be saved on the purchase of Engine 5, which is at the airport station. Both vehicles will become fully equipped and replacing the well-used equipment that is on both of these apparatus. This has the backing of the city treasurer and also CFO Griffin. So, Madam President, I urge passage of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien. The motion is for final passage of Resolution 21105 by roll call. Any discussion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero naes.
And that motion carries Resolution 20, R 21105 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21106, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $2,700,000 for various improvements of the Solid Waste Department, Four Hills Landfill, and the purchase of two refuge trucks.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I move for a final passage of R 2106 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R 21106 by roll call. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero naes.
And that motion carries Resolution 21-106 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21107, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $5,150,000 for the city sewer infrastructure program.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R 21-107 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21107 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver. Thank you. Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero naes.
That motion carries, and Resolution 21107 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R 21108, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Public Works of the City of Nashville, New Hampshire, and Local 365 of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, ASME, from July 1 of 2017 through June 30 of 2023, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Jettie.
I move for final passage of R 21-108, and I would like to speak to it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this, the mayor referred to this earlier. This resolution approves the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Public Works and the, the union representing the Public Works employees. It, it's a six-year contract. It goes back to July 1, 2017, and will end in June 30, 2023. To the union's credit, it provides for reasonable cost of living adjustments of 1.5% for the first, each year for the first four years, 2% for the fifth year, and 2.5% in the sixth year. And of significance, it includes the city's new health plan. The Budget Review Committee voted unanimously to recommend passage of this resolution, and I ask for your support.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Seeing none? Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21108. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Loz.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero naes. You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-108 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-109. Authorizing issuing of building permits on Old Harris Road, a Class 6 highway.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R. 21-109 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 21-109 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Resolution R. 21-109 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-110. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a First Amendment concession agreement with Granite Diamond LLC.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Sorry, having difficulties here? A motion for final passage of R. 21-110 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21-110 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? We're a chatty bunch tonight, aren't we?
We're tired.
Oh, okay. All right, seeing no one. Motion is for final passage of R. 21-110 by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-110 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 21-113. Authorizing the mayor to enter into a First Amendment to the 14 Port Street lease or Unit B with Liquid Therapy LLC.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. I would move for final passage of R. 21-113 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of R. 21-113 by roll call. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-113 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O. 2043. Authorizing stop signs on Hill Street at its intersection with Dartmouth Street.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend O. 2043 by replacing it with a Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yes. Originally, some of the neighbors had complained about the traffic to make it very simple, and stop signs were requested. And even before they came to Alderman Cle and myself, they put in two temporary stop signs. To make a long story short, it was determined because the neighbors really didn't like one of the stop signs, and it was determined by the city engineer that that actual second stop sign was not required. This amendment takes that one-stop sign out and puts the one that needs to be in place there.
Okay, motion is to amend by replacing ordinance 2043 with the Goldenrod copy. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a little bit, the Committee of Infrastructure has met and totally agrees with Alderman Dow and Alderman's Cle's amendment on this unanimously. And would like to thank Alderman Cle and Alderman Dow for the due diligence and bringing this forward. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the motion to amend? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I would just like to thank DPW for letting us be involved in this. As usual, they're taking signs up before they tell us.
Anyone else? Okay, the motion is to amend ordinance 2043 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Sure.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to now make a motion for final passage of O. 2043 as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? The motion is for final passage of ordinance 2043 as amended by roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
I guess, yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Sorry. Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and ordinance 20-43 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolution.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-114 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $100,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into public health and community services grant activity FEMA vaccination response grant.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of our dash 21 dash 114 by roll call. May I speak to my motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. This resolution authorizes the city to accept inappropriate funds from the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of supporting COVID-19 vaccination clinic activities. This funding shall be in effect from December 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2021. It is timely in this fighting of this pandemic. I urge you all to support this, and I will be coming back with a subsequent motion if this is approved. And Madam President, may I make the request, if I may, that you open this up for additional sponsors if you see fit. Thank you.
I'd be happy to do that. Additional sponsors, Alderman Cle, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Lou, Alderman Laws, Alderwoman Kelly, you're already a sponsor.
I know, I want to speak to it.
Okay, Alderman Karen, Alderman Dow, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver, and myself. Did I get everyone? Alderman Harriet Gathright. Okay, Alderman Kelly.
Sounds like everybody is a sponsor, but I just wanted to make a quick note of it as it would have come to Human Affairs. I did speak with Director Bagley, and you know, the need for those funds, as we all know, is very time-sensitive. So I appreciate everyone supporting this bill and helping us to roll out this vaccine and help us get back to normal here in our community.
Okay, so the motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of our dash 21 dash 114 by roll call.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien. Alderman O'Brien, I believe you're on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes.
Thank you. Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21-114 is declared duly adopted.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-115. Approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashville Police Commission and the Nashville Police Patrolmen's Association and the Nashville Police Commission and the Nashville Police Supervisors Association regarding military leads of absence.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Tenza, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Cle. Alderman Laws, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Schmidt. Did I miss anyone? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-116. Establishing an expendable trust fund for appropriations for the Business and Industrial Development Authority.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Laws. And I'll jump on that too. Oh, and Alderman Harriet Gathright. Given its first reading, I will assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 21-117. Amendment to R. 2083 authorizing the acquisition of property at 36 Buck Middle Road, tax map C, lot 762, for the purchase price of $370,000.
Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dow.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading of R. 21-117 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
And before you do that, Alderman Dow, I should have asked for sponsors. Anyone else wish to sponsor? Alderman Cle. Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Laws. And I will sponsor that, co-sponsor that as well. I'm sorry, Alderman Dow.
Okay, you, I should have, you should have all received Attorney Leonard's email on this. There's a couple of changes that are to the advantage of both the sellers and the city. In section 10, we added the last sentence, the provisions of this section shall survive the closing. And in section 15, added heirs, and I believe I am going to be making a motion to amend that. Let me just. I don't think, no, I guess we don't, because this is the original motion, yeah. So it doesn't need to be amended here. So we had already passed this unanimously previously, and the intent has not changed at all. We just added the necessary words to it, but since it's a purchase and sale, we need to come back and have the approval of the Board of Aldermen, so. And I'd like to thank Attorney Leonard, who is working an unbelievable amount of hours on multiple projects. And she and I have had more communications on this in the last few weeks than probably with anybody else. So I would seriously ask you to allow us to suspend the rules for a second reading and final passage.
The motion before us is to, a motion to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading of Resolution 21-117 by roll call. Any discussion on that motion? Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. I'm not clear. So I'd be happy to vote on this, but I don't think I've understood clearly what it is we're voting on and why it. So Alderman Dow, you said we've already approved this unanimously, and I'm not sure what you're saying. We've approved before unanimously. But if you could, you know, I've looked into it, and I understand that we had originally planned to cede something to the seller after we build the road. And there's something different now that instead we're going to say, let's just, we will work, let's have an agreement to work cooperatively after we build the road. Do I have that right?
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, basically, the same purchase and sale was approved by this board before. We did change words. One of the sellers had an attorney, and the two attorneys, Attorney Leonard and their attorney, Attorney Foy. I just wanted to add these couple of words to make it a cleaner document. So there's no basic intent change from the original purchase and sale, so. And the reason that we have to act on this quickly is we're trying to close this within the next couple of days, we hope. And so that we can keep our schedule on the new middle school.
So just to follow up.
Yes.
Did you ever send the change in the wording out to us to look out?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Any further discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Madam Clark?
Second reading of Resolution R-21117, amendment to R-2083, authorizing the acquisition of property at 36 Buck Middle Road, tax map C, lot 762, for a purchase price of $370,000.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend R-21117 by replacing it with a copy of amendments received from Attorney Leonard this afternoon by roll call, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, this is the one that was sent out by Attorney Leonard. We've just had the negotiations finalized with all of the owners. It's been so many phone calls, I don't know whether it was last night or, but, or this morning, actually. And now everybody's in agreement. We're ready to finalize the purchase and ask for approval of this motion.
Motion to amend. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeses and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to now make a motion for final passage of R-21117 as amended by roll call.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeses and zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 21117 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Thank you, everyone.
You bet. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O-2146, changing the starting time of regular meetings of Board of Aldermen.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Lopez, Alderman Lou. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee.
First reading of ordinance O-2147, temporarily changing the downtown improvements funding.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clea, Alderman Cleaver, and I will co-sponsor as well. Given its first, oh, Alderman Laws, sorry. Thank you. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of ordinance O-2148, amending the residential district's ordinance with respect to residential driveways.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Dow, Alderman Harry Gathright. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the National Planning Board, and Schedule a Public Hearing on Thursday, March 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM during the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting. Okay.
First reading of ordinance O-2149, amending the conservation subdivisions supplemental use regulations.
Additional sponsors. Seeing none. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the National Planning Board, and Schedule a Public Hearing on Thursday, March 4th, 2021 at 7:00 PM during the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting. I've also had a request to send that to the Conservation Commission. So we will send it there also.
First reading of ordinance O-2150, relative to temporary road closures and elimination of certain on-street parking for use by restaurants for outdoor dining in 2021.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clea, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Laws, Alderman Dow, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Harry Gathright, and I will co-sponsor as well. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance O-2151, relative to temporary 15-minute parking in 2021.
Additional sponsors. Alderman Clea, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman, Alderman Kelly and her little one, Alderman Laws, Alderman Dow, and Alderman Harry Gathright, and I will co-sponsor that as well. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just going to let it sit there, I guess. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance 2152, authorizing a stop sign on Poby Road at its intersection with Ridge Road.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clea, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Dow. Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Now we have a period for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the committee, the board? Seeing no one? Remarks by members of the board. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on some, a lot of constituent feedback I've gotten over the last couple of days. With the increasingly cold weather that we're facing, there have been some pretty obvious shortcomings in some areas with regards to support for warming stations for people who don't have anywhere to be during the day, or, you know, in the evenings on weekends. It has impacted some businesses downtown where people are coming in and, you know, one of the four people might order a coffee, and the rest of them just might kind of hang out there in order to stay warm. There's been increases in panhandling downtown, and I want to say most of the comments that I've gotten have been voiced as concern, not irritation or disgust or anything like that. People are concerned about other people who are out in the cold weather and want to know what we're doing about it. So I have been telling people that there are warming stations available at soup kitchen during the week and at the Southern New Hampshire Rescue Mission. That's one resource, but we do have some shortages over the weekend and in the evening times, which we will be working to address. So this is going to be brought up this Thursday at the Substandard Living Conditions Committee for discussion. I think it's a solvable problem with the number of nonprofit organizations we have and the different resources in the city, and it's something we just need to be attentive to, particularly this year, because there's so many fewer alternatives for people to be using during the day due to COVID-19. So if you're interested in that topic or you're concerned, you're not alone. A lot of other people are also concerned about it. Certainly the people who are suffering the most that are outdoors are concerned about it, and we are working on trying to come up with a community solution. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I would be remiss if I didn't say that and mention the fact that I was sad to hear the passing of a former Board of Education member, Bill Mosher. He served our city well for many, many years on the Board of Education, and one of my fondest memories of Bill was when I was on the Board of Aldermen back in 2009, he had just been elected to the Board of Education, and there was a plan to, the Boys Club at the time was expanding, and there was a plan to either eliminate or move Nashville's alternative middle school. And myself and some key members of the Board of Aldermen were very much in favor of moving that alternative middle school at the time and keeping it open. And I remember touring the new spot that we had in mind for it up on Amherst Street, and Bill was there. And one of the things that struck me about the way that Bill approached things was he looked at not only the, you know, the integrity of the building and things like that, but he talked to the children who were there and the kids that were being affected by this and what school would be like for them if they didn't have this facility. And it was an approach that, at that time in city government, we had been lacking quite a bit. And Bill didn't let those kids down. He was a key vote on that, and we did ultimately build that alternative middle school at the time. That's how Bill was. He was very practical, but he also listened, and he listened to his constituents, and he valued education, and he valued the children of his city, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I wanted to let the residents of Ward 5 know that the mayor has scheduled a town hall meeting for this Thursday night by Zoom at 6:30 PM, and this is your opportunity to ask the mayor questions or voice your opinion about what you, what you think about what's going on in the city. And so you can, you can look at the mayor's Facebook page to get the link to Zoom or the Ernie Jettie Ward 5 Alderman Facebook page. It's on there as well. And please come and take advantage of this opportunity to express your opinion. Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, just a couple things. I'd like to echo the sentiments on Bill Mosher. I served with him on the Board of Education, and he always listened to everything that was being said, made very logical decisions. So it's sad that he had passed. The other thing is, I visited the vaccine site today at Nashville High South, and I was amazed at how, just how fluent and efficient it was being run. They were doing an amazing job, and everybody seemed to be getting processed very efficiently, whether it was the first shot or second shot. They've got it pretty much down to a science. The one thing I'd mention, though, is, is there's a questionnaire that they should be sending you the night before you're, you get the vaccine, and you need to fill it out and bring it with you. It speeds things up immensely. Otherwise, they have to set you aside, and you have to answer the questions orally. So just a hint to anybody that's going, if you get the questionnaire and fill it out ahead of time, you save even more time. The longest part of the whole thing is waiting the 15 minutes after you get the shot to make sure you're okay. So kudos to that entire group. Thank you.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd just like to thank Mayor Donchus and Director Kleiner for the very thorough and comprehensive review of administrative services. It was very helpful. I'd also like to thank Director Bagley and our team for continuing their fine work in very difficult circumstances. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to give a shout out to, excuse me, Director Cummings. We, Ward 3 had their parking study town hall, and it was really well, well done. The Mr. Hill gave a very thorough explanation, and I think we had a decent turnout with a lot of good questions. And the one thing that came out of this was no one was saying, "Don't." No one was saying, "Yes, yes, yes" to anything. The group talked in compromise. Can we do this? Can we do that? I thought the questions came out really well and so on, and I really do want to commend Director Cummings for doing in that, in that. I'd also like to give a shout out and thank Alderman Lopez for all that he's doing relative to warming stations and so on. I know he sent out a few emails, and I appreciate Chairman Schmidt for taking this up at the Substandard Living Meeting this week, this coming week. And I too would like to send my condolences to the passing of Bill Mosher. I was shocked when I, when I heard it. Being on the Joint Special School Board, he was amazing when we had him there, the history and the knowledge that he's had of all the buildings and so on. It was, the questions he would ask were things that I think the person didn't think of, because he'd been through so many of these, these buildings and so on. And I also agree with Alderman Dow about the smooth sailing through the Nashville High South vaccines. When my husband had his, we did sit there for 15 minutes. I've heard a couple of people, two actually today, that went, that didn't have to sit there for 15 minutes. I would recommend it. I haven't heard of anybody having a bad reaction, but it's better to sit there for 15 minutes if they'll let you. EMTs are there in case anything does happen. And I would also like to thank the mayor and especially Director Kleiner for the outstanding presentation that she gave explaining all the incredible work that they've been doing. And thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, committee assignments. Alderman Dow.
Yeah, tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, budget. We're going to be talking about the new development on School Street.
Alderman Schmidt. Alderman Schmidt?
Not me. Thank you. Not, not, you know, nobody does this, right? 7 o'clock on Thursday, the Substandard Living Conditions Special Committee will be talking about emergency procedures, and we're going to talk about warming centers. Very important right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you. PEDC will not be meeting next week. Instead, we're going to be meeting on March 4th so that we could have a public hearing on a couple of ordinances that are in front of us, and we'll be following that public hearing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Committee announcements? Okay, seeing none. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the February 9, 2021 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
The motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clea.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Molshear.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeses and zero nays.
And we are adjourned at eight forty-three PM. Thank you, everyone.